I was standing there watching the weather.
I was standing there watching the weather. And all of a sudden, out of this, the front of my house.
You know, like I said, yeah, so I'm like, alright.
Bernie man.
He pitched four innings, no good ball.
Yeah.
Oh wow, was that?
They won the game.
Was that like right behind you guys? I didn't hear it.
So.
Separates our two developments.
Okay.
Remember when my son played?
You're pretty close to each other.
Closer to good drive.
And watch him play.
Yeah. How's the burn?
That's what it's all about. I mean, those sirens went.
Everybody.
It was a lot.
Yeah.
Near the last.
Maybe that night, I think that's. That was one last night.
He did alright, I think.
Yeah.
I don't think he ever played Monday.
But they didn't say where it was. And this morning, it said seventeen hundred Glenbrook Circle. Glenbrook Circle, which is a little cul-de-sac. Oh, so off of Glenbrook.
Well, I thought the guy, I thought that was the address of the person.
You're probably gonna be along with him.
Help get the cars up. He saw it.
My oldest was the only one to play baseball very long, so he's thirty-two now.
Well, I did. I knew we were going.
Wow, geez. I don't sound at all that.
Yeah. Yeah, he lives in Philly.
Thirty-two years old. Our property goes from Reshu down to Weetland.
Are you done?
Keeps the riffraff.
Is the other lot trees or grass?
Both.
So he's gotta go out. Mowed it.
Oh, no, he has a riding mower. He gets the front end back done in twenty minutes. He doesn't waste time, do you?
I see a household across from you guys.
That's right.
You got a median hair.
Oh, yeah, that's for, that's for newspaper. For the weeklies. I do stuff for.
Maybe like nineteen.
Yeah, so that's why I go all those games.
But it's not like, it doesn't make sense. We'd think it would be like nineteen oh eight or something, but it's something.
I tried to catch.
So is it like a part-time thing you do?
It's hard time, but it's a lot. I mean, I do.
Because we cut through that yard.
Weeklies, I'm doing some.
To go to preschool. Um, because my girls go to Apostles preschool.
I work with every school.
So the gentleman who lives next door, it's an older guy. So he doesn't. You know, the kids have been watching the work as it progresses. Because it's been, you know, several months.
Oh, wow, that would have been cool.
Fifteen years, yeah. I thought you guys knew.
And I feel like we probably held it.
Olive stuff and all.
Because they put the sign up.
I like youth sports and high school sports.
Still.
They're fun to watch.
I talked to one of the guys that I know, he lives there just outside of some other things.
How long ago?
In the fall.
Oh, so they just flip a.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they like what they were doing, but they didn't agree with the video approach. So they were like, we're not gonna hire our own.
Well, it's pending. I just saw like one.
Yeah, yeah.
One day it's gonna be great haul, the next day.
Which is like, I mean, my home's a little bit, a good bit larger than that, and we paid significantly less than that.
Yeah.
Profit.
You got a nice fall.
That is for this.
It is very nice.
Yeah.
And it's nice because they put on these.
You know, I'm worried about. You don't really.
Yeah.
So you come in there about. Or no, a stone.
Yeah, that is it. It's gotta be exciting for them.
The league plays or playoffs down there. There was like a eight-foot tall thing and it just.
Oh, yeah, like a fourteen, fifteen-year-old kid? Is that a fever or something? Wow.
Yeah, it was a monster.
I mean, they.
He, yeah, he moved. Yeah, I knew it was on my calendar, then, you know, just nine, ten. See the high school place.
Hmm, four fifty to nine ten.
Or maybe it was six.
That's, of course, township in Hennfield has always has its rivalry, so. Hennfield used to complain that they lost some of their better kids.
A year ago, like two point.
If they had done and they go.
Five and a half for like conventional good credit.
Township was really good for my oldest son.
They're nothing, definitely like what I paid.
They're still pretty decent on all levels.
Use many kids to other places.
Wow.
Going vertical or clean, or kids go to Mountville or anything.
And I read, and I refinanced.
Straight to the levels.
To get it back.
And I think six percent sounds insane.
Hennfield doesn't, but they know Mount is gonna get it. Most of those programs, they have their coaches. Or sisters from the high school.
Would have been.
Playing what they want.
Yeah, because we were already in our house.
Started out.
Credit card interest rates.
Doesn't have to.
Yeah, I know.
When I used to sell cards, the maximum rate.
The old barn on our farm, we used to.
Was like nineteen.
ESPN baseball had batting cages.
I remember being over here when they were, one time.
Bring the kids out.
Yeah.
Because it was like, they didn't wanna give us that kind of more.
We had, uh, some of the people that organized, that invited.
What did it cost you to build it?
Yeah, it was Sunday evening, just as last Sunday, and they were.
It's now worth over here from the, over here.
Yeah, it just didn't have people to step up.
And take over.
You built the home you're still in now.
Yeah.
You built a home in five years beforehand, and they just weren't, they just didn't have enough kids.
For five years.
And like, well, my son. Well, if he wanted to wait for him.
Play for ESPN.
You're on?
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the, this is June, July thirteenth. East Tenfield Township Planning Commission meeting. I'd invite you to join the opening of the meeting with the pledge to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since we have a regular member absent this evening, I've asked Mr. Boltby to be a voting member this evening. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was on May eleventh. I don't have a copy of them in front of me, Nate, but I think when I read the vote. And this is pretty insecure, approval of minutes, I had written down six oh and one, you have five oh and one. That would be the only change I would have noticed. Because I think we did have full seven members. Of voting. With Mrs. Byrne.
Let's see.
Yeah. Is anybody got any other corrections? If not, then we're ready for a motion to. Take care of them.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as amended this evening.
One second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Will, that we approve the minutes as amended this evening to reflect. The one change for the voting on the approval of the last meeting's minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed?
And I abstain since I was abstaining.
Okay, so it's, again, it's six zero one with Mr. Call to abstaining. Right, the first action item is corrective zoning. I suspect the township is gonna present this information.
Yes, at the April twentieth Board of Supervisors meeting, they were approached by representation for Always Never Done at thirty ninety Harrisburg Pike. They've had issues with zoning in the past. They're currently low-density residential. And. It was identified that in the twenty fourteen zoning map change, the property was changed from local business. To low-density residential, along with two other properties. And the board identified that as an error and asked staff and engineer to correct that. Excuse me one minute, let me get the right page up.
It's right down here to the corner.
Along with the Always Never Done. There were six other properties identified for the rezoning. Get this remote on here. Always Never Done here. Hotzi. The Lanisville Animal Hospital, Bender's Garage, and two residential properties. Requested change from load into residential to community business center zone. And township property from low-density residential to recreational open space.
Nate, I'm looking at the footnote to the right there, the lowest purple area. That says propose to stay residential low, right?
Yeah, if you go to the ordinance exhibit. Through discussion. It was deemed that the whole property would be rezoned rather than that little sliver. If you keep going, Nate, to the, if you go to, I think it was, there's a. Exhibit to the actual ordinance that was drafted. That was in the meeting packet. That would show the entire property owned by the vet's office to be rezoned to CBC rather than that little sliver that's behind Hodzie. As it's shown on this, this was made early on. The other one was the, the final draft, which is a part of the ordinance. That's before you guys for recommendation.
So my understanding, that one's not correct. The entire tract is to be reset.
Correct, if you, yeah, if you. We'll get it up here in a minute.
It was parcel G on your other slide.
That page.
I won't talk about that.
I think that's showing existing. If we go. To sheet eight, it looks like. And maybe if you flip, yeah, there you go, we can take a look there. You can see there, it's, it's covered by a blue outline, but it's the same little sliver right here. That note no longer applies and everything is being. Considered to be CBC with this change.
Okay, gotcha.
It was, um, as Nate mentioned, the intent was to match the map that was a part of. What would have been the prior ordinance before the twenty fourteen adoption? And the properties, that little sliver, I think, was still shown as residential at the time due to just. I think maybe it was either just an error because it's so small, it's just a little piece on the back. Or perhaps maybe it was just left that way because what's adjacent to it, but again, it's, it's very narrow. It is part of the deed a lot for the vet. And it allowed the rezoning to be much smoother to, to call it a property and then have to go out and have somebody actually lay a line and create. Legal description for what is smaller than an alley, you would say. It's just a tiny sliver. Does that answer your question? Does that help?
Yeah, I think on this picture, you can see the sliver you're talking about is behind the frontage property.
The driveway and.
Right there.
Correct, it's, yeah, be right behind Hodzie's establishment. Sorry, I've been showing this one to you. It is this right there. That very fine, you can see it being that, what appears to be gray, but is purple through there. That's the piece. And again, that's all a part of the. The vet deed, if you will.
Yeah, just one second. Let me, I'll get to you. Does anybody else on the commission have questions? Okay, anybody in the audience will need you to come up and use the microphone, please. And also, there's, should be a signing sheet there?
Yes.
For your name and address.
About to be turned on. That should be on.
Should be on.
Um, my name is Robert Bender. I'm Bender's Garage, and the only concern I have is that little sliver you're talking about is a access to my daughter's house. It's the smaller. Yellow property that's. The smallest one back there. I don't know if you can see that.
The second one in the yellow.
This is correct back here, Bob. If I put the dot on, is that one?
Not that one.
This one?
Nope.
This one?
Nope.
Which one?
That way, up. That smallest little sliver goes this way.
Right there.
Yeah.
So her access to her house is that little sliver, so as long as it wouldn't impact her access to get to the house. I wouldn't have any objections to rezone it. But it just, I didn't know if you were aware that that's an alleyway to a home.
Is, what is that considered? Is that considered a paper street or?
Well, I plow it myself. No one maintains it, so.
I think it's, it's, you probably have like a, either like an agreement that'll be recorded with the vet's office, or there's on a plan somewhere. Yeah, wouldn't give them access. This, the, the zoning wouldn't, wouldn't impact.
Okay.
An agreement. It, it just helps to clean up what, what was deemed to be an error. But again, it, it wouldn't. It wouldn't supersede any agreement. They'll be out there to allow someone.
Okay, that's all I just wanted to add that because I have direct.
For sure. No, that's, that's a valid point, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else here in the township building? Nate, I see a couple people on Zoom. Would anybody there have any input or questions? Is that you?
The only, the only people on Zoom are myself and I believe our zoning officer.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So. If there's no further discussion, we can take a motion on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, that we recommend. Approval adoption of the corrective zoning map amendment and ordinance. Subject to all staff and engineering comments.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair. They have a motion by Mrs. Byrne, seconded by Mr. Palakowski, that we recommend approval or adoption of the corrective zoning amendment. And ordinance subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, I was supposed, that would be unanimous then. Alright. Along a similar vein is zoning ordinance text amendments. And there are several of them.
Amendments to farm-based business, home-based business with impact, parking requirements, effective zoning, hearing board decision, and outdoor storage. For the farm-based business, we added a definition. For. Yard waste compost facilities and put it as a allowable use within the agricultural and agricultural holding zone. Uh, for the home-based business with impact, it was previously a special exception in all the residential zones. This amendment allows it by right and provides performance criteria. Including limiting the size within the house, hours of operation, number of employees. Things that the zoning hearing board typically condition as part of their approval. With the parking requirements, when the twenty nineteen amendment came in to. Adopt the IT standards. For number of parking spaces. The criteria for. Parking lots and I believe loading vehicles was accidentally removed from the ordinance. This is simply bringing it back to what it was prior to that change. The effect of the zoning hearing board decision. Currently. When the zoning hearing board approves a case in relation to land development, they have six months to. Submit the land development plan and a year to record it. Those timeframes, we found to be too restrictive and were extended to a year to submit and a year to record as well as requiring. If any time extension would be requested prior to the time running out. And the outdoor storage of recreational vehicles, we. Changed the definition of recreational, recreational vehicles to remove type one and type two. And remove some holes in the ordinance regarding type two vehicles. So the criteria for recreational vehicles are the same.
Do you think that? Covered it?
So. I must have missed it with the, the. Yard waste facilities, that'll be permitted by, by right in the ag and the ag holding.
Yes.
I was thinking it just said ag holding.
Did you say ag holding?
Yeah, I think what, what that came about as is the yard waste composting is a, what do we call it? It is. Farm-based business, so it's a. It's an option under that use, if you will. So those use, that, that use would be permitted in both. I think it's in each, already in the ag and ag holding. The use specifically has been added to the ordinance. I think in the past, the prior ordinance, the use was maybe listed as composting or something along that line. So there's a few uses in the municipality that, that are more aligned with what's drafted here than what was drafted. Or it was allowed under the old ordinance. So it's not as if that use became. Added to each zone, it's an option under the. Farm-based business, which is defined and already permitted. It's just another option under that criteria. That has other criteria you have to meet already. So it just allows that use in, in that. Category, if that's a better way to say it.
Okay, so, yeah, as I read it, I thought it was just. Adding that use to the ag holding, and I thought we should include the ag in that because the ag holding's just a. Sort of temporary zone, but we know we have a facility already in the ag holding doing that. Yeah, as long as it, I think the ag zone is ultimately where that'll probably happen in the future.
Yeah, the, if you look at, I think it's page five of the. Proposed ordinance. It, it's that, that sheet there lays out. The new use as yard waste composting, that is. It's, it's listed there as an example of a use that's under that category. So that's where the change is. Where the use is permitted is, is not proposed for a change. It's just what. Category it's in and where that use can be added to, if that's a better way to explain it. It's not as if the yard waste composting is being inserted into a use in the ag zone or ag holding. It's just added to the category that already exists to make it more clear.
And I have several questions. So there's a fencing requirement for. Ag business in the ag zone. Does that impact like landy shade mulch? Those kind of places?
Do you know which part you were looking at there, maybe a little bit more specifically?
I don't. I scribbled some notes.
That's okay. Well, I'll take a look through here too as well and see if we can track that down.
I appreciate the screening requirement, but I think in the ag zones, sometimes it may not be. You know, properties are. Already screened that they don't have neighbors close.
Sure. And I think the, the ordinance would permit. Someone to utilize existing vegetation as a screen if the understanding or if, if the. Permit comes through, they show that they understand that screening needs to remain and it's required. So therefore, if it was. Damaged or removed, they'd have to replace it. But if, if there's existing screening in place. They would be able to utilize that. And then, of course, if there's an expansion or something, they'd have to. Again, show they meet it or add and show they meet the screening requirements as well.
I was just thinking a landy shake because they got that huge hill of dirt.
Yeah.
How are they gonna screen that? So how, how does this ordinance changes? How does that impact existing home-based businesses?
Are we, we're jumping to the home-based business. That's fine. Same page.
So existing businesses would have to conform to the change in the ordinance. Like for parking and those kind of things.
Any existing one, if they don't comply with this, it'll just be non-conforming. They have. Prior zoning hearing board approval and the, the conditions set for that.
And a lot of those conditions would be what the changes are reflected here. If you recall, it would maybe a year ago or more, there were changes made where. Two other, other uses where the criteria that the zoning hearing board placed on the approvals. Were basically added to the ordinance to prevent certain uses from having to go before the zoning hearing board is deemed just to be maybe too much, that kind of thing. So that's, that's what has happened here as well. A lot of that extra. Conditions, if you will, were, were reviewed and then added to the criteria. So it. I don't know if anybody out there would have anything specific unless it's very specific to a certain property. Or a use, which would probably be more restrictive than what's here. So. They would maybe already be at a disadvantage rather than having to comply with what's new. I don't think you'd have too many of those out there.
Yeah, I didn't know. I mean, I, I knew some other townships have done some changes and then sent mass letters out to.
Sure.
Businesses and then created quite a mess.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good point. And the, the. These specific amendments are geared towards the home-based businesses that are deemed to have an impact rather than those that have no impact. They're just permitted by right and you come in for a permit, I think, and you show you meet it. So. There's kind of two tiers to that, but I don't think this would impact many. Negatively, if that, if that makes sense, just because of the conditions that may have already been imposed on them to get their initial approval to operate.
Yeah, I think the goal's admirable to try to. Help those folks not have to go to the zoning hearing.
I think there were internal. Discussions and, and reviews based on maybe the amount of people who are now working from home or perhaps doing different things. And I think that was the intent was that. You may have a spike in applications and. Is, is a better way just to have them come in and have a checklist they have to meet to get a permit. I believe that was the intent behind that part of the change.
As far as a home-based business part of it. Many of you may know this, may not, but my wife has a salon in her home and. She's grandfathered in with a four-chair salon, which is obviously larger number of employees than what you're specifying here. If we sell our property and somebody else comes in and tries to. Use or start a salon, start a barber, are they now not allowed to have that number of employees?
Typically approvals would go with the property. So if a person would come in to your home. And operate as is, if you will, like if there was no change to what was approved, then there wouldn't be an issue. If there was a change to be made. It would be deemed at the staff level whether it's enough to have them come before the zoning hearing board for that use. Does, I don't know, would you look at a use like that as a home-based? Home-based business impact, or do you have like a home occupation use as well, do you know?
There would just be a home-based business with them.
Okay, so yeah, so you would be, it would, as long as you don't change it. It could run as is, which would be no different than if your wife changed her plans too. You know what I mean? So I don't, yeah.
In addition to that, it, it says twenty-five percent is allowed. Uh, use of your house or five hundred square feet, whichever is less. What's the intent of the five hundred square feet if the tax laws allow up to twenty-five percent to claim?
Can you reference? Which part you're drawing from?
That's page one. Numbered, it's just a open bullet point item on the.
Page seven.
Yeah, I see it now. It's, it is two seventy-five, two GG eleven. Can you pull up the existing text for. The home-based business impacting the specific use criteria? The home-based business impact the specific use criteria? I was just curious to see if it was an existing condition. I would say to that one, it was probably deemed that was the amount that was. Either a common or deemed appropriate by staff.
That uh. That number was brought forth by members of the zoning hearing board. And part of the intent was to ensure that the home-based business remained accessory to the. The principal residential use and that it wasn't a competing principal use that wouldn't be allowed.
While we're talking about home-based businesses or. Impact home-based businesses. Um, I took a look at the, the zones where it's allowed. And I think there's only four zones where it's not allowed. Uh, campus. Mineral extraction. Open space and enterprise. And enterprise is the one that caught my, my mind there. Um, is there a reason we wouldn't want it in enterprise? Because I think there are some, some residential properties in enterprise.
Sure.
That I, I don't know why they shouldn't be afforded the same opportunity.
I think, and if I'm wrong Nate, I think the intent there was that. Residential uses aren't permitted in the enterprise zone. So therefore. If they want to come through, they would have to get zoning hearing board approval. They, they could do what they'd have to get a variance to do so. Currently and under this amendment, just because the use isn't permitted. To have a house, you know, that, that's, that's, so like you have to have the house to have the home-based business.
Yeah, maybe some out there, but they're not.
Yeah, your point's valid. Yeah, for sure. And that, that's a current, current condition. It's not proposed to be changed um, with this text.
Nate, when you're talking about the park, parking, did you say it was? Port, portions of that were eliminated or omitted inadvertently and then just put back in?
Yes.
Because again, when I read that, I was thinking about parking, as, in particular, the restrictions on. Uh, once you go above five cars, I guess, or five spaces, you have to be ten feet. Behind the right away, street right away, and you can't be closer than five feet to a sideline line. And I was trying to look at, you know, some of the areas we're talking about are in Landsville and Roarstown. With some of these zones. And some of those properties aren't very big. And if we're trying to get them repurposed or people take advantage of them. I'm not sure how much of a going concern they could have if they had to meet those parking setbacks. That was what struck me and I kind of looked at a, you know, a Google map of, especially in the middle of Roarstown there. I'm not sure any of those properties could be reused because of the parking situation.
No, and we didn't uh, really look into it. We just recognized that it was removed. And we, we had been telling developers. Uh, the criteria for parking lots and we had nothing to back it up and realized it was deleted when we did the twenty nineteen amendment. Uh, we didn't look at any changes to those criteria.
Is it too late to, to have a look at that? Again, I. The ones that come to mind is Roarstown and there's, there's gotta be at least a half dozen properties in there that are businesses right now. Um, and they don't, they're not ten feet back behind.
I had that on my notes as well.
Okay, good. Behind the right. Okay. You know, there, if they had to be ten feet back from the street, and I think they also talk about loading zones having to be. Further and distances and stuff, I. I, I really think we ought to take a look at how restricted that would be.
Just following up, just in a related to the parking, um. Because there's like the two sections. There was that one specific to the village residential and there was the other section on uses for parking lots. And on there, it said the, um, that it should not be for the long-term. Sale or display, or display or storage of vehicles. You know, the storage of vehicles seems to me reasonable for a parking lot. But I was just.
I don't think we have, I'll say used car lots there, but somebody might want to do that. And I go to Columbia Avenue and Roarstown Road. That whole corner is a used car lot and they're parked right at the curb practically.
And that would fall into. You know, we have. Motor vehicle storage that is part of other uses such as motor vehicle sales and, and that would be allowed then, but. You know, going to the sheet parking lot and the car sitting there for months.
But some of those village, um, properties right there in Roarstown are. Automotive type, there's a bike shop there and a detail shop there. So yeah, it just might be a little restrictive for that.
And I thought back to a couple of plans we've had come in. I think, um, one was for the apartments or. Somebody tech homes there, um. North side of Marietta East, uh, Lisa Cooper's old place. And I, I just got to think, I wonder what the parking layout looks like in those places, if they were gonna be close to the property line. You know, to utilize their space. So I don't know what other types of businesses might impact, but. I think it should be. Is. A question goes with that is, is there a. Pressing timeframe to get these approved? Keep the supervisors happy or the manager happy or something?
I don't, I don't believe so. We can definitely take a look at that.
I just wanna point out, excuse me, one additional concern I have is that the hours of operation that are added to this and. You know, I, I think of my wife's business and she's often has a client sitting in the chair past nine o'clock at night. And I think many salon owners, which are a primary business that goes at home. Um, people want evening hours. They don't want to have to go to the salon when they take all work to get their hair done. My wife is working past nine, two, three nights a week. So I think of those businesses and I know of another salon that just opened in a house right down the road from us. You know, I think of those type of people, nine o'clock's a little tight for them to finish up their clients.
I think the intent here is really to just get away from going to the zoning hearing board every time that these applications come up. And um, no one wants to go to the zoning hearing board. It's a fact of life. And what we did and attempted to do was create criteria that. We could put in the ordinance that wouldn't require that. And we had to walk a fine line between on the fence in terms of yes. You might have clients after nine, but then you have neighbors that are concerned about what activities go on after nine. And you are in a residential neighborhood. So nine o'clock seems to be a valid timeframe. Are there? Is there policing of this? No. That's kind of the background.
I do think that, you know, and if you looked at my property, there's. Properties that are in a residential neighborhood and then there's properties that are zoned residential that aren't really in a neighborhood. My impact to my neighbors is slim to none. They don't even see us. They don't even know us. So. Not every scenario falls into that criteria in those hours of operation. I talk to my neighbors maybe three times a year and they, they say we never see you.
And township doesn't care. I mean, if we get a complaint, which would be doubtful. We'd have to go out and, and seek you out. You'd say you're grandfathered in, you have no criteria. Okay, you're good.
I just, I, I, I'm one of the people that less restrictions is more in a lot of cases. So it's my opinion that. You know, if you can apply. Conditions to something, in some cases, it's better than restricting all from doing something.
And the only way to, to list conditions is to go to the, before the zoning hearing board.
Yep.
And that involves a fee, involves time, involves, involves representation. If you have a chance to get something through the zoning hearing board. And these are the topics that will come up in terms of hours. In fairness to the neighbors that are in the residential neighborhood.
And they would put those same hour restrictions on it.
Correct. Those, that's the typical that has been followed. In terms of Jim's question about timing, no, there is none. There's no urgency to this. We did advertise the ordinance for adoption, but we could simply postpone it next meeting, which is on the twentieth. Because we have some time, we have some wiggle room in there.
Had a couple of thoughts about, um, the recreational vehicle type items. Um, if we're ready to move on to that topic. The definition of recreational vehicle, I saw motorcycle listed in there. Was that? Because do we intend to? If you look at the definition of recreational vehicle. Because I think there's a distinction from a motorcycle. And of like boat and a camper.
Really?
Some people use a motorcycle as like their daily commuter and. And they're little.
Do you know where it was?
Uh, in the definition of recreational vehicle. So it's on the second page, um, section three or two seventy, two point two. It was on that, just, it was towards the beginning of the packet. So probably the second page. So it's section. It's two seventy, two point two.
Section three, section three.
Yeah, section three.
Yeah, you're right. Motorcycles and dirt bikes.
Right, the dirt bikes aren't street legal. They don't have the inspection requirements. That's a little different, but a motorcycle. They have to get those inspected.
So that would mean they would be a recreational vehicle and they'd be covered by this parking requirement.
So meaning like, and that was kind of getting to the next point. So right now under the current ordinance. My understanding is that you can park a recreational vehicle in your front yard with a certain setback.
Uh, you can only park a recreational vehicle in your front yard for temporary storage, I believe, three days.
Not for all types? I thought it was a setback.
For anything that falls within the recre- recreational vehicle definition.
You're talking about existing or proposed condition? Existing ordinance or the amendment, are you referring to?
The existing ordinance with the type one and type two structure. Did it? Is it?
It allows for the long-term storage in the side and rear yard and the front. It is only temporary storage.
In the current, okay, I guess I missed. Understood that, um. I personally would prefer a little more flexibility with outdoor vehicle storage. Because under the current ordinance, so they have the type one and type two distinction. Is a property, is there anything that says you can't have a type one and a type two currently? Because I kind of spent some time reading through it the last time we had this discussion.
No, I, I have to look it up, but I believe currently it limits it to one.
I don't think it specifies that. You, it says you can have one type one. It says you can have one type two. There's nothing in there. Yeah, yeah.
There's no and or.
I personally don't see. Why storing a boat or a camper. Is necessarily something that the township needs to be regulating. Especially as it's in this ordinance, there's no mention of lot size. I mean, if someone wants to have a boat and a camper and they have a couple acres somewhere, I don't see that. As something that we should be regulating.
I think we do get complaints about front yard storage of this.
This is outdoor storage.
Yeah.
We're talking about this isn't, you, you can have, you could have a garage, you know, and you're not saying you can't have these things. This was specifically to outdoor storage of the, if I'm correct, that was the intent, was it to be outdoor storage of recreational vehicles?
Because we have a partial. Outdoor storage. Regulations which don't make sense if you actually read them. Is why we are proposing this, these changes. I think we'd be perfectly fine if there was no. Rule again, a rule for or against recreational vehicle parking. But the fact that we have it then lends itself to complaints. Because they know they can.
So, yeah, and with that, I mean, perhaps maybe a better alternative, because sometimes we. Try to correct an ordinance by adding more text and adding more verbiage to, because you know, no one can have foresight. Complete foresight when you write an ordinance. Maybe we should just omit that section and. Allow individuals to kind of manage their property how they see fit. And then the township wouldn't have to be fielding complaints because they could just.
Do what you want to do, yeah.
I think we'd still get complaints for RV storage permanently in the front yards though.
You get complaints, but we couldn't do anything because there was no rule against it.
Yeah, and if it's, you know, perhaps ordinance could be limited to something like it must be on a paved surface. Because a lot of properties don't have necessarily rear access. Um, most driveways are just in the front. You're driving through the town, you see boats and campers and things. On several properties. Yeah, if you want to keep it there. I mean, I don't. I don't see what the problem is. Um, because there are certainly HLAs and rental properties that are gonna have things that are more restrictive than the township ordinance. So I think if we're bringing it up to revise it, maybe we should just omit it.
Take it back to the, the committee and have a discussion about it. Man, I don't, I'm not against it.
I think.
We're trying to fix it is what we're trying to.
I don't like the storage of boats and RVs in the front yard.
That everything has to be in the backyard or.
Or side yards.
Not in the front yard.
Behind, behind the front set. Could be a side.
But that would be, I respect your thoughts as well, but.
Now, item number three, section three up there that you mentioned about the definition of recreational vehicle. I think if you read that carefully, it's. Recreational vehicles may also include motorized vehicles designed to be self-propelled or non-motorized vehicles designated to be towed. Or carried by another vehicle, including campers. So I think it's talking about the trailers. I don't think it's talking about motorcycles.
Okay, as I read it a couple of times, because I assumed that that was probably the intent, was like having a bike on a trailer. Out front, but I think maybe, because we don't want to be limiting, I think motorcycle storage to the same.
Trailers, yeah, trailing, trailing those things. But yeah, definitely a point of future discussion for the planning committee.
That paragraph is rather confusing.
Planner must have written it.
Long, long two sentences.
And I am looking through the existing ordinance about front yard storage and I'm just not seeing anything. Is it?
I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay.
They're loud, loud in the side yard, but not front.
Under the current ordinance, uh, three A, the temporary parking of one type one or type two allows it. Uh, within the front yard, uh, for a time not exceeding seventy-two hours during any seven-day period.
And that's problematic too, because how do you measure that? I mean, it's, it's an enforcement nightmare. So I'm kind of leaning towards, uh, Mrs. Will's idea.
Trying to make your job easier.
Exactly. Nate's very familiar with the section we've dealing, dealing with a complaint.
Gotcha.
Realize that this, this is just a horrible section of the ordinance that needs to be fixed.
Or omit it. Yeah, and I, so I know you say three A, but that's talking about temporary storage. I don't see. Is it in there for a long term?
For B and C or for the long-term storage? And when it says behind the setback line, it, it's the front setback line.
The setback.
So it would be the side or rear yard.
That wouldn't be like if you have a deep front yard.
You'd have it in front of your house.
You could have it in front of the house.
Space between the front of your house and the setback line.
Yeah, that was, that was my understanding, because I.
Front yard setback.
It's, it's permanent, because I stepped it off.
The front yard would be between the right away in the house, the setback line would be thirty-five feet from right of way, whatever year, so it's. I think that was part of the intent of this was to make it. The change was you can't have it in the front yard, so it's been reworded to say. The front yard, not the required front yard or the front yard setback.
And that was, so currently you can have it thirty-five feet ish back from the front.
I guess it would depend where.
The setback.
What, what your zone is.
I think that's what it is, because I, that was my interpretation, I currently have a camper in my front yard. And it is about.
Yeah.
It is far enough. It is far enough back. And if I've gotten complaints, I'm sorry about it, but I did read this pretty carefully to make sure that I was in compliance. So I'm in compliance now, but uh. I'd have to, I'd have to move my rig. If this was adopted, so I'm certainly not supportive of making. A more narrow restriction than what is currently existing. And I think currently. There's also nothing that prohibits a type one and a type two. So I think this is tightening it up a lot. So for those reasons. You know, I just, I think this is going the wrong direction on the ordinance.
Here you go. On the agenda for the next meeting.
Or which next meeting?
Group meeting, planning group.
Planning group meeting, okay. Are there any other sections that anybody else would like to get their roar in the water here, because? I don't think we want to go back again.
And you can send us information, or you can email us and we'll add it to the list of discussion points if you find something else.
Again, nobody on, online. Right. Having heard the, a number of sections here, which. Maybe should we revisit it? I would like to make a motion that we table any action on the zoning ordinance text amendments until further discussion can be had with the planning group.
One second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Fullerton, second by Mrs. Byrne, that we table any. Action on the zoning ordinance text amendments pending further review by the planning committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? So that would be unanimous, Nick. Okay. Now moving on to the real business, I'm sorry. Lancaster Plumbing and Heating Sketch Plan.
Evening. Kevin Amber here from R2, also here with me tonight is Larry Prescott from Professional Design and Construction, he's the architect and. General contractor for this job. We're here on behalf of Lancaster Plumbing and Heating and relatively small improvement they're looking to do on their property. So just in general, we wanted to talk about the sketch plan, what is proposed. As for recommendation of a waiver for plan processing as far as a combined prelim and final. Plan submission and also just generally discuss a couple potential future design waivers that we would be. Looking for input on as we move ahead with the land development plan design. So just a brief background, the existing property is at eleven eighty-four Enterprise Road. In the enterprise zone, it's existing is right at one acre. The existing building is about nine thousand square feet and they're proposing about a twenty-six hundred square feet addition at the rear of the property. Along with that, they're also proposing some additional impervious area, which would be for additional parking and some storage of. Business trailers, things of that nature that they have currently. So currently on the property, there's also twenty-six existing parking spaces. And we are proposing forty-four spaces total. That would be partially accomplished by restriping some of the existing spaces which are. A little bit over the design width in the ordinance. And then also with the additional pervious I mentioned, adding some additional parking there. The intention with. Controlling the additional stormwater runoff is to do an underground infiltration bed beneath the proposed paved area. And that would be mostly collecting roof leaders from the proposed and a portion of the existing building. To control that difference in the stormwater volume. A couple other things to, to mention, there is an existing stormwater easement that follows the eastern property boundary and between the, the two properties. And as you can see, there's an existing non-conformity on the, the western boundary where the. Building is encroaching into what the current side yard setback is, we would be considering that. Expansion of an existing non-conformity for that portion of the building. And. Then at the rear of the property, we will be providing the, the appropriate twenty-foot landscape buffer. And we would be potentially requesting a waiver for some of the buffers on the, the east and west side. So just, there were a couple comments offered by David Miller Associates in the review of the sketch plan. Which did mention a few potential design waivers, as I mentioned, we went to discuss. As we move ahead with the full land development. So the, the first one would be. Related to any required sidewalk or curbing along existing Enterprise Road. Currently, there's no other existing properties along there that have existing curbing sidewalk. It's mostly industrial, commercial businesses along that stretch. So we would be requesting a waiver of those requirements. And want to get the planning commission's input on that. And then two. Related items on the potential landscaping, as I mentioned. There's an existing. Encroachment from the building on the west side and then also from the parking lot on the east side. So we aren't proposing to encroach any further than the existing parking or building does, but that does. Require some potential modifications of the landscape buffer requirements. So what we would be proposing would be to meet that at the rear of the property where. We would be extending the paving, but not beyond that twenty-foot buffer line. And then keeping basically the, whatever the minimum encroachment is on the east and west side with the building. And the existing parking lot, there's also the existing stormwater easement on the east side, which would make. Planting within that area difficult. And as I mentioned, there's all industrial, commercial buildings that surround this, so we would not expect any issues with, with buffering from similar uses. And the other requested section. Potentially relate to the landscaping would, was section two sixty-five eight seven one. Related to the requirement for islands within the parking lot. So we're trying to maximize the parking with this business use being that. The nature of the business, they have employees working in the office and then also business. Fans, trucks that go out, so to maximize the parking spaces is critical. Not that they have that many people working in the building, but obviously coming, leaving their personal vehicle, taking the business truck, so. We would request to. Relief of that requirement for providing a parking lot island, which for the ordinance is every one hundred thirty feet, you're supposed to have an island. So both of these, on both sides of the building, we would be slightly, slightly over that on the. The length of parking that's adjacent to the building, that's about a hundred sixty feet and then it's about. Little over two hundred feet on the east side. And what we could potentially suggest, if, if the plant commission would be open to that, would be planting either some additional trees at the, at the rear yard. An equivalent amount that would be required in the landscape island. And or, there's also a, a small area that we could plant some additional trees at the northeast. Corner of the existing parking lot where there is some room between the, the existing stormwater easement and the, the parking lot line. Please let me know if any questions or any other items you guys would like to discuss further.
Yeah, I guess it's more procedural question regarding the encroachment into the setbacks. Is that something that, that we can? Do, or does the zoning hearing board have to allow that expansion of a non-conforming area?
For the setbacks, as long as they're not encroaching any further than they currently are, they're not going to need to go to the zoning board.
Okay, even though it's further along that same area, these, they're not getting any closer to the proper line, so they're okay.
Okay, thank you.
Regarding the. Curbing or widening or whatever sidewalks, anything up there? If you stick around maybe another half hour, you'll hear how we handle that. Because the plan for Lancaster County Motors will address that. But typically, we do not waive them one hundred percent, we defer them. With some conditions, so.
And as far as the vegetative things in the, in the islands in the parking. You know, typically we're looking for. Vegetation somewhere else, trees or something else, somewhere else on the plan. I think you should be able to accomplish that.
Yeah, if that would be acceptable, we could provide an equivalent number elsewhere on property. You mentioned that. So many parking spaces are required for people to drop their private vehicle and get in a company truck. Are they all the same size bays then, or, or are there two different versions of parking spaces here?
They're, they're all the same size parking spaces, I believe most of the vehicles are like van size.
Yeah, they basically.
Okay. Is there any? Or are there any? Loading zones or anything like that, any dock spaces or drive-through roll-up doors that have to have access to the building?
We're actually eliminating, they, they currently have a reset there with the dock. Because either property, which in the other truck. Into the property, you know, the way that. The law can figure it out. We're actually planning to fill that in and eliminate the dock, but you can see their additional parking spaces along the building. They cover up some existing drive indoors. The ones that are sort of hatched on the left side of the parking lot. Drive indoors, but that area would be the new expanded paved area, so there'll be some garage. Basically pushed to the back and try to pick up new parking spaces. They have, apparently the back area would become their storage of the vehicles. They come and go, they don't warehouse, but obviously you get the quantity, you pick up.
So I, that was one of the points on the, the review letter. Is we recommend that the applicant clarify if any outdoor storage is being proposed.
Yeah, I mean, as Larry said, it, it comes and goes, there would be also be some dumpsters proposed at that, that rear paved area that. Striped in parking, that's where their current dumpsters are, we would just be pushing this back.
And I'm assuming they would be enclosed, screened, the dumpsters and so forth?
If, if that's required, I don't believe they are currently in this.
It's required, yeah.
Yeah, we, we could add screening that, and as I mentioned, that would be vegetation screening at the rear and we can do what else is required for it. For the dumpster screen.
Yeah, I suspect you're going to have a number of discussions with staff and engineers, our staff and engineers about some of these details. But if we recommend waiving the preliminary plan. Then you just need to realize that if you come back and we don't have all the questions answered, we may take another iteration of that.
Right.
All right, further discussion, or can we move on to the? Waiver request? Okay. So the applicant is requesting a waiver of a requirement to submit a preliminary plan. And. The recommendation is that it be granted.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we recommend to the supervisors approval of the preliminary plan waiver. For the Lancaster Plumbing and Heating. Project.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Caldas, that we. Recommend approval of the preliminary plan requirements for the Lancaster Plumbing and Heating project, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? That would be unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, so the next item is the Brookside Phase Five Apartments Final Plan, there's waivers and the plan itself.
Evening, my name is Ash McComby, and if it's all right, I'll use the podium, I find it easier to turn and point from over here, although I will say I preferred when the podium was over there. I'm much more accurate on that side.
It's got casters, I get, no, it's probably wired in, you can't do that, never mind.
Again, my name is Ash McComby, I'm an attorney with McNeese Wallace and Eric, I've been before, all of you before. We represent twenty-seven oh one State Road LLC and Oak Tree Development Group. Here with me this evening are Eric Scott, Senior Vice President of Real Estate Operations for Oak Tree. And Joel Young, RLA with R2N Associates, the engineering firm for the project. We're here to present the final land development plan for Brookside Apartments Phase Five. We ask that you recommend approval of the plan and modification requests to the Board of Supervisors. Subject to satisfaction of the staff and engineer comments. We did receive the DMA review letter dated July sixth, two thousand twenty-two. There are no major concerns in there, we're comfortable with everything that, that's in it. The few questions that, that we did have have been addressed to staff already. Property again is Brookside Eastern Track located north of Harrisburg Pike in the township's campus zone. In Phase Five specifically is construction of a hundred and fifty unit apartment building, multi-family development. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Joel to kind of walk you all through the plan and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ash, good evening, it's good to see you, some familiar faces, it's been a little while. So we're again, happy to be here tonight, I'll walk through some of the details. Um, I'll walk through some of the details of the plan. I'll give a brief understanding. I think many of you are familiar with the, the Brookside project. This is part of a multi-phase project that we've been, before the township before. Um, we previously have the approval for the hospital, which now is near completion, as you know. One phase with the sheets, which is now complete and completed and constructed. The enterprise zone, which has, um, been conditionally approved, not constructed yet. And now with the area of the plan that we're looking at right now is the hundred and fifty unit apartment building, which again is shown in this location here. Um, this was, this plan had the original and final plan for Brookside did show the apartment building as part of that overall plan, but before you here today with a final plan to show the greater detail of that, which is what we're, we're talking about. And for that, if it's okay, we could go to maybe the, the enlargement. We have a color rendering just because I'm sure you're tired of looking black and white drawings today, so we'll go to something a little bit more color on it. But this is an enlargement of the apartment building right there, as you can see. As mentioned, it's a five-story story, a hundred and fifty unit, um, thirty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-one square foot building. The, um, of the improvements, you can see the main building is shown here. Um, access to it is through, um, what we call access drive A, which connects from the sheet's building, as it was shown in preliminary and final plan, all the way to this location here, to, um, to, to parking area out, to parking areas right next to the apartment building, a lower tier and an upper tier here. Uh, the lower tier goes to the first floor, the upper tier has access to the second floor. It constitutes two hundred and twenty-five parking spaces, which would equate to about one point five parking spaces per unit, as per your requirements in the ordinance. We also have worked with your, um, emergency services, um, director and staff to look at emergency access for it, which would also include fire, truck, access lane, which is in this location of the apartment building to allow for turnaround and access for emergency and parking deals, vehicles in this, in this location. In addition, making sure turning radiuses through both parking lots are sufficient to accommodate your emergency vehicles in the township. So we've worked with them on that, and got clearance from your staff on that level. Talking a little bit about, um, utilities, our utilities are going to be extended along access drive A for both sewer, water, uh, gas and electric. Uh, they are being, being tied in both for this unit and future phases that are becoming online eventually. Um, so they, well, they'll come in along through a striving and tie into the building into the, most of it is the utility rooms, which are in about this location of the actual building, all underground. And, um, we've actually worked through with the sewer and water permitting on those, and I think we have the final, um, planning exemption, working back and forth with staff right now to get that tidied up, so to speak, so we're in the completion of that at this point, too. Stormwater, just a brief discussion on that. Some of you may recall, um, this is part of a much larger plan for stormwater for the Swarun, where we've worked with both the hospital and other phases of Brookside to do a legacy sediment stormwater improvement of Swarun. Part of that is complete now as part of the hospital face to the west. It's constructed and looking quite nice. This portion here, uh, would be, so it's the second phase of that, already was previously approved by DEP as far as the improvements to the floodplain restoration, which would include the stormwater. Um, we did submit this plan to DP and the Conservation District as a minor modification, because obviously the configuration of the building changed a little bit, and a couple of our outflows adjusted, so that's in review with the DP and Conservation District at this moment. Um, we also with that, of course, have your normal conveyance systems within the parking area and sound leaders from the building and several water quality, um, facilities within the parking areas to accommodate, you know, obviously cleaning of the water prior to discharge into the stream area. Lighting, we have full lighting across the site. Some of it on the building, majority of it is neither along the pedestrian walkways or in a parking lot, you know, standard fixtures we would have as we do on other parts of Brookside. We do, and there were several comments in the review letter, having, have lit the entire area here, we have not purposely lit some of the side, some of the walkways as they extend away from the site. A lot of those are part of the larger walkway path that we are proposing would be built in this phase, but also a part of sort of the parkway or repairian, um, pathway situation, which was, we're intending it to be a day use kind of walkway situation, not evening. So our part, our lighting is around the building for safety measures in all parking areas and sidewalks associated with that. But then we do not light the walkways, we're leaving those for more of a naturalized park kind of condition along the rest of the, of the area. Pedestrian access has been included, as it was shown from a very beginning master plan. We kept the same sort of script from that standpoint to allow for full pedestrian access, both along the linear trails, which tie into the apartment building, going east to a future connection whenever any uses east of the bill of, of this property may be developed. We are allowing for connections along Swarun as you go further to the east. At some point in the future, we're allowing that sort of regional connection to occur. Uh, in addition to allowing full sidewalks within the parking lots and off to the rest of the other phases at Brookside, there'll be full interior, um, sidewalks and connections for pedestrians as we planned from the beginning. We're continuing on with that, um, that design. As Ash mentioned, there are two, two waivers that we have before you tonight. I believe they're pretty straightforward. Um, the first one is, uh, your Sado section two sixty-five dash eight point five point D one, and that's a defer of requirement to provide two access points to land development plans that generate more than a hundred and daily trips. And what this is, is that being a phased project at Brookside is, we fully have multiple access points to pretty much all the development, but it's in phases. Obviously, as mentioned, the apartment building currently now will be accessed by access drive A, which is one access point to it. However, with, is actually being reviewed by the township currently, we have phase six, which is coming in, which is allowing a second connection to tie into access drive A from Harrisburg Pike. So there, there's a recommended, recommendation from the township engineering staff to grant that based on the fact that we are phasing this project, as we always have been, and we're in the process of having a subsequent phase come in that which will allow for that second connection. And again, as we continue to move along and have other phases that are built, more connections will occur.
Joe, let me just explore that a little bit further. I guess two questions. One is timing. What if the next phase doesn't happen for a long time? Um, I see that as a risk then to this hotel area. And then secondly, could you just tell us, is it gonna come basically up the left side of this property to Harrisburg Pike?
Actually, I can show you specifically where it would be. If we go back to the overall plan, um, I can show you.
Kind of looked like the road was gonna come up there.
Yeah, basically what we have here is this is access drive A, there's sheets right now, and the, the, the axis ends here currently for construction. We're extending it all the way along here. There's actually access drive, what we call currently, access drive B, which runs behind sheets. And the phase that's in review by the township right now is this, um, commercial pad in this location right here, which will continue access B and through phasing allow connection to Harrisburg Pike, where we have that stubbed in currently. So that's tying into that second connection via this portion of the land development plan, and, and is intent for Oak Tree to proceed with that, with that work.
Can you, can you tell me approximately how far it is between where access drive A and B come together and the hotel or the apartment, sorry?
I don't know what specific amounts in that, there's probably a six hundred, or maybe six hundred feet, thousand feet, maybe.
Yeah, I guess that's where I was going, is at what point does that become really just one way in? I mean, you, you've got two ways to get to that point, but then you've only got one way to get that last six or eight hundred feet or a thousand feet to, to back of property.
Well, I mean, we looked at that very much, that you, you have some, sometimes cul-de-sacs or access drives, it wasn't a terribly long time. And we also know that future phases coming in, oh, my point, point is not working, have multiple connections, which will come in through here as, as we work on phase six and seven here. So we know that, um, through the design, we actually have three or four connections that will be coming in on that road.
So they, can you blow that up a little bit? Nate, I'm just looking at the left side of the property there. L- l- looks to be a street almost there, coming straight north, south. Right there, access drive. Is there, is there no way that could be brought up to Harrisburg Pike?
The grades are very extreme. Yeah, the actual grades between the finished floor of the building and Harrisburg Pike are twenty-eight feet, maybe between lower twenties and higher, so. But this comes in at this point. The intent is that there'll be connections along this direction.
There will be. From, from that access drive to the west, there will be other ways to get in.
There will be, yes, designed as.
Because I, I mean, I wouldn't, I would be opposed to having to come into the intersection up behind sheets. Right there, whether you come in above sheets or below sheets, you still have to take that long road back to the apartments. That would, that would be my concern there.
That's why we, we wanted, we did a review with staff to know that this is something that, um, is being constructed, but we have phases coming right, right after this that are.
So Nate, Nick, you've, you've seen enough that you think there'll be connections there?
Yeah, and I think.
Towards the parking area directly, not.
And they had. I, I don't know if the intent is people will be allowed to come right off Harrisburg Pike and access the apartments through access drive D or whatever it will be called off of there, but I know the request and the plan has been reviewed by the EMS coordinator for East Tenfield as far as related to the emergency access requirement of having two. But I think your point, too, is also, uh, a user or, uh, individual who lives there, if only B is constructed, they still have to come to one point to enter the apartments. Is that, is that your last point or your other point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we understand that, I mean, our intent is that knowing this is a phased project, we're trying the best we can to continue to build these other connections in, such as, as mentioned with this action here and this tie, this tie-in here, which is under review currently with your township, and knowing that we are fully planning on advancing the other phases that are, as are shown in the master plan, which will actually add two more connections to that access drive.
If you had to anticipate when you'd have access from access drive A over Harrisburg Pike, uh, meaning not having that long stretch, is it two years?
It's hard to say exactly, it might be, but not, but our intent is as we start construction on the apartment building, soon afterwards, the structure will start, as soon as it's approved by the township, that we start construction on the pads here in which includes some of that road. So I don't think it's gonna be a chi or connection between the room.
Probably something.
Probably, because the construction phases are gonna overlap.
Okay.
I, I can't give you a specific time, I don't.
Yep, I'm just looking for.
Intent is that they're gonna be sort of overlapping construction schedules.
And the plan that's currently under review for phase three has the connection to the existing terminus of B and the right and right in off Harrisburg Pike. So that would be a part of the plan, which would probably be before you guys fairly soon.
Yeah, I believe in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, that, that, that was made sure as part of this was that, that is on the most current plan that's under review. And again, reviewed by the EMS staff as well.
The only, the other waiver we had was, well, yeah, this, this is a good example there, thank you, showing the phasing that we're showing them. This is the overall, uh, master plan showing some of the phases. You see that there is an intent through future design, though we aren't holding specific to alignments, what you're seeing in the center area, because those still need to be designed, but you see that there's the intent to have multiple, several multiple connections.
And the phase line showed at three, where it stops isn't current. The phase three plan shows what would be the purple outline for phase three extending all the way to the right in, right out at Harrisburg Pike.
But the phase four buildings and areas in there are not planned yet.
Correct.
The other modification, the rendering probably will illustrate this best, is a waiver of Sada section two sixty-five dash eight seven point seven point one two D, planting islands will, planting islands will contain walkway connections rather than the tree. I mean, most of them are required of trees. If you can see in the plan here, we, um, with the intent to keep a strong pedestrian connection, especially along from the sidewalks and the future pa- pathway, we wish to keep a connection here, which would use the parking lot as part of that pedestrian connection to the front door of the facility. So our request is simply to allow us to do that as opposed to having trees in that one island. Pretty straightforward request.
Just that one.
Just that one.
Just that one island.
That one island, all the other ones are intended to have trees as well. Just asking their question. So the, um, as Ash mentioned, we are also in receipt of the July sixth review letter from David Miller Associates. So more than happy to go through any of this, um, but we feel that these are the minor technical comments that we're already addressing, or your typical administrative items that, that are.
Yeah, there's no need unless you have, see a problem with any of them.
Okay.
How, how much higher is that than Swarun?
Building itself?
The building itself, yes.
Probably two, thirty, it depends, but it's probably in the range of twenty-five to thirty feet. Because there's a retaining wall, this, this, the stream is down below here. We do have a retaining wall, retaining wall, not thirty feet, returning wall is probably ten to fifteen feet, depending at the worst. But we have some slope from the bankman up and the embankment down to the stream also. So, um, so it's probably, it depends, twenty and twenty-five feet.
Does that retaining wall run along the entire road that comes from sheets or no?
Uh, no, it does not, not the entire portion. It runs in certain sections. We have it running along this area here, stops, picks up along this area to here, stops again, and then I don't, further up towards sheets, there's more of it, but most of the extent that road does not have a retaining wall with it. But the walkway is included alongside. It's fairly steep down towards that end. Yeah, we, we use the building and some of the retaining wall, a little bit of the retaining or tiered parking, uh, tiered parking here, pick up some of the grade, it's sort of steps up the slope to pick up some of that great change.
Does anybody on the commission have further questions for the applicant? If not, then, um, we have two modifications to take care of first.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We recommend to the supervisors approval of, uh, modification number one and two in our packet. Two would be conditional, and that's all subject to staff and engineer comments.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of modification one and conditional approval of modification number two, subject to staff and engineers' comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? unanimous, seven zero. And then we have the plan itself, the final plan.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the final land development plan for Brookside Phase Five Apartments, subject to all staff and engineering comments.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Palakowski, seconded by Mr. Caldas, that we recommend approval of the final land development plan for Brookside Phase Five, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? That would be unanimous.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
All right, the final plan for review this evening is Lancaster County Motors.
Uh, so after finding you get on the agenda yesterday morning, they called me yesterday afternoon to be removed from it.
So moved, so removed.
Uh, they wanted additional time to, uh, reevaluate the project. They might want to make some changes.
I know, I remember the discussion we had with them, especially about the driveways. And I think one of the things we recommended was just get rid of that one driveway. It looked like that's what they're gonna do. But then, I also thought I saw something in the comments about one way, and therefore the alignment's not required. What, what's one way?
I think there's still two on the plan, and the one to the east was a one-way in.
Okay.
I believe is.
Because I saw the remove. What, there was one plan that showed the removal, and there was another plan that showed the new new Mecado. And the new Mecado was on the east side was a little thin sliver, I couldn't figure out what was going on there, so. Never mind, we don't have to worry about.
Yeah, I think I think it was, they may have widened the access that's existing there, but I think the sketch plan we saw before had a two-way there as well as to the west. And I think they made the eastern access a one-way in and then a two-way to the west, and I think they did propose some asphalt widening on that eastern drive, which may have been, what it was, it would have been enough to make it probably like 12 feet, something like that.
All right. Nate, is there any old business?
There's not.
And I guess we still don't have a way online for public comments, so if there's nothing further, the meeting is adjourned. Now, quick. I was wondering who was going to talk from Lancaster County Motors. When they introduced everybody, I thought, who's left?
Yeah, I like.
He was there for a while. He was. He was. Better, yeah.
Should be here next month. Following his borderline.